Okay, everybody, welcome to the Asheville City Council meeting. This is our first time meeting in this chamber since before the beginning of the pandemic, and it is the first time for several of our council members here this evening, right? One, two, three, four. Four council members have never met in this chamber before, so. No, four. The three of us have met in this chamber before. So this, so it's very exciting, and if you'll look around, I have a prize for whoever notices what's different. That's right, Mountain Express reporter. The paintings have been covered by landscape of photographs, I believe, they're photographs, which actually happened quite some time ago, but we haven't been here to enjoy it. Also, we have some new equipment, which is actually what took us so long to come back into the chamber, cameras and technology. So, we're probably, we should be looking great on TV, I don't know, but maybe. Hopefully, we are. So, just some housekeeping matters, if you could please mute your cell phones. If you want to speak during this evening's meeting, please sign up at the table just outside in the hallway, and you can do so. We are going to begin this evening by rising for the Pledge of Allegiance. I was checking to make sure the flag was there.
A pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to begin this evening with a proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month, and I don't know where Dee Tyrell is, but I am sure he is here, there he is. Dee Tyrell McGirt, our Parks and Rec Director, if you could bring your folks up and let's do this proclamation. Come on, everybody! But not quite.
That's a challenge.
That's right. Okay, we have a proclamation here in honor of Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas equitable and accessible parks, recreation, and active living experiences are essential to communities throughout Asheville, allowing residents to explore, connect, and discover; and whereas Asheville Parks and Recreation promotes resiliency by providing better mental health, improved physical health, increased physical activity, and opportunities to counter social isolation through safe, multi-generational places for arts and culture, fitness, sports, leisure activities, adaptive and inclusive therapeutic play, greenways, pools, and other areas to promote healthy, active communities. And whereas parks, recreation, and education activities such as after-school programs and youth sports are critical to childhood development and foster civic pride, imagination and creativity, health habits, teamwork, social equity, emotional stability, mutual trust, and environmental responsibility; and whereas Asheville Parks and Recreation is a provider of nutrition hubs that supply healthy meals, nutrition resources, seed libraries, edible vegetation for urban foraging, and community gardens; and whereas the Asheville, the city of Asheville's recreational, educational, and entertainment assets drive economic opportunity by expanding the local tax base through support of the outdoor economy, spaces for festivals, increased educational and entertainment attractions, recruitment and retention of businesses, crime reduction, and direct employment of 117 full-time and 100 temporary and seasonal team members. And whereas parks and natural areas enhance water quality, preventing flooding, improve air quality, provide vegetative buffers to development, maintain the urban tree canopy, and produce habitats for wildlife; and whereas well-maintained greener parks are essential and adaptable infrastructure that make our area resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change, providing cost-effective and sustainable environmental solutions while preserving the culture, beauty, and well-being of our neighborhoods; and whereas Asheville Parks and Recreation is essential in addressing Asheville City Council's priorities of improving and expanding core services, neighborhood resilience, and reimagining public safety. Therefore, I, Esther Manheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, do hereby proclaim July 2022 as Asheville Parks and Recreation Month and encourage all of Asheville's residents to partake and enjoy all the parks the city has to offer.
As you see, we brought a few folk to kind of recognize July as National Parks and Recreation Month, but before I get started, Mayor, thank you, Vice Mayor, Council. For the record, I'm Dee Tyrell McGirt, the Parks and Recreation Director here with the City of Asheville, and yes, July is National Parks and Recreation Month. For us, it's a time to kind of highlight and celebrate the Parks and Recreation essential services that departments across the country are offering their local communities. At the national level, the National Recreation and Park Association has identified conservation, health and wellness, and social equity as its three pillars, and these are the three pillars that kind of guide what we do as Parks and Recreation professionals in the industry. I think we all agree that it's important that, as communities grow, that we don't just grow, but we grow smarter, and part of growing smarter includes using our lands and natural resources to connect people to nature, maintaining and build recreation facilities close to where people live to provide more options for people to have healthier lifestyles, and ensure everyone in the community has access to these recreation services. Now, Asheville Parks and Recreation, especially more now than ever before, our focus is on community recreation. Specifically, our goal is to provide the citizens that live here, that work here in the city of Asheville with quality recreation services and amenities that all people can enjoy. So, for the month of July, I invite you, we invite you all, to explore, connect, and discover your local Parks and Recreation Department. I've shared with you all the program guide, everyone should have a copy of it. For those who are watching online, you can find a copy of our program guide at Asheville Parks and Recreation on our website, but it is a complete listing of everything that we have going on within Asheville Parks and Rec. I have to say that none of this is possible without the employees, the people that you see, many of who are not here today, tonight, without these professionals, and my emphasis is on professionals. Much like any other occupation or field or industry, Parks and Rec employees are professionals. A lot of times, you have to have a combination of education and certification and years of experience in the field, and we have employees that are in our department who have bachelor and master degrees in Parks and Rec. They have a number of years of working specifically for Asheville Parks and Rec, but we also have a number of employees that have several years' experience working for other municipal Parks and Rec departments, as well as we have a number of employees that have gone a step further and acquired the certifications, the Certified Parks and Recreation Professional Certification, which is one of the highest levels in our field. So, we want to commend these people. We have folk here who are responsible for maintaining our parks, keeping our restrooms clean, we have our recreation team that's the face of our department, the programs that you see in the activity guide, that's them putting all this together for the community, and we certainly have people who are working behind the scenes to help make what the people who are doing in the field possible. So, we just want to take some time and recognize the employees of Asheville Parks and Rec. I will end with saying this, last week I was reminded why what we do is important. I had an opportunity to go out with our outdoor recreation coordinator, and there was a young, and we went kayaking on the Green River, so it was an opportunity for me to kind of experience and explore some more parts of western North Carolina, but on this trip, there was a young boy who had told his mom that he wanted to get outside his comfort zone and do something that he had a fear of. He wanted to experience something like kayaking on a river that he had never done before. Now, I can tell you, with twenty-some-odd kids on a river kayaking, many who have not done it before, that in and of itself was an adventure. So, you can imagine, for this young man who's never done it before, he first started out in a kayak by himself, and it didn't take long before we realized, we probably should pair him up with someone. But through the whole thing, he had a great attitude, he did not give up, he was encouraged, and he was committed to seeing this experience through, and I promise you, at the end of that experience, because he had the right attitude, because we as a Parks and Recreation Department were able to provide something for him and his family that he probably would not have been introduced anywhere else. This is a lifetime thing that he'd take with him and an experience that he'd never forget. So, these are the types of impact that we have on the community, and these are tangible, real-life experiences that people who live here in Asheville are gaining through what we offer in Asheville Parks and Rec. So, I'm going to shut up, thank you all. Again, come out, July is National Parks and Rec Month, come out and discover your local Parks and Rec Department. Thank you.
All right, thanks again to our Parks and Rec staff for visiting this evening and making We have one other proclamation on our agenda that we added too late to be on the printed agenda, but that was not our fault. So, we have a proclamation tonight entitled "Affirmation of Fundamental Reproductive Freedom," and Councilwoman Kim Broney is going to present this proclamation, and Ms. Shelley Brown is here to receive it, so please.
I wanted to start this evening with saying thank you to Mayor Manheimer for supporting my request to expedite this proclamation. Whereas the Supreme Court of the United States established in 1973 the constitutional right to make informed, private medical decisions with the landmark Roe v. Wade decision, which led to safer practices and drastically reduced the incidence of maternal deaths and hospitalizations related to abortion, and whereas the Supreme Court of the United States on June 24, 2022 overturned Roe v. Wade, ending the constitutional right to abortion in the United States; and whereas our community is experiencing unprecedented attacks on reproductive autonomy, freedom, and justice at both the federal and state levels of government; and whereas the impact of abortion restrictions is predominantly realized by those who already experience disparities in healthcare, including people working to make ends meet, Black, Indigenous, and people of global majority, people with disabilities, immigrants of all statuses, members of the LGBTQIA+ community, and people who live in rural areas; and whereas healthcare is a fundamental human right, and access to gender-affirming, full-spectrum, and comprehensive reproductive healthcare, including abortion, contraception, prenatal care, labor and delivery services, and postpartum care, are necessary for overall health and well-being; and whereas the threat of prosecution, as well as disparities in our criminal legal system, can result in negative outcomes by intimidating people from seeking or providing care, and healthcare providers have an ethical obligation to provide essential care to their patients. Now, therefore, I do hereby proclaim the affirmation of fundamental reproductive freedoms in Asheville, condemning the criminalization of accessing or providing essential healthcare, including full-spectrum reproductive and gender-affirming healthcare, and proclaiming that people deserve access to high-quality healthcare without fear of judgment, harassment, coercion, reprisal, or punishment. In witness thereof, I hereto set my hand the seal of the City of Asheville to be affixed on this 28th day of June 2022, signed by Mayor Esther Manheimer. Thank you to Shelley Brown from Planned Parenthood South Atlantic for receiving the proclamation this evening.
So, on behalf of Planned Parenthood South Atlantic, I proudly accept this proclamation, and I am also so proud that our city is our ally in our fight for women, for women's equality, for women's dignity, for women's freedom. No one should decide for a woman whether or not to have a child, when to have a child, how many children to have. That is a deeply, deeply personal decision, and no politician should make that decision for her. So, I'm extremely grateful that you all made this proclamation today, I'm grateful for your support, I'm grateful for our community's support, and I thank you.
Thank you. Our Councilwoman Sage Turner suggested tonight that we're all wearing pearls to channel the late Ruth Bader Ginsburg Supreme Court Justice, so that is our symbolic effort tonight. And we have been receiving a number of emails just inquiring what role the city plays in this big picture, this big conversation, and as was maybe already cleared a lot of folks, in North Carolina, we remain one of two southern states where a woman's right to choose is still legal for the time being, and we do anticipate that our own resources here in Asheville will, people will be seeking to access them from around the multi-state region because the states around us will not be providing services. And so, one of the roles the city will and does play is supporting our Planned Parenthood here in Asheville, which, if you see frequently, is the subject of a lot of demonstrations and activity happening around the property, which makes some folks feel unsafe and makes it difficult to manage operations. So, that's an area where the city's police department offers partnership in trying to provide security for that facility. So, I just wanted to offer that, that as far as I know, that's the only resource in western North Carolina, and now in the multi-state region of Georgia and Tennessee, South Carolina, soon to be Virginia.
Soon to be Florida.
Right. Okay, with that, we are moving on to our printed agenda. The first portion of our agenda is the consent agenda. Do I have questions, comments, or a motion to approve the consent agenda?
This is Sage, I'll move.
Ms. Quinn. We don't really have to introduce ourselves anymore.
Right.
I'll second.
Still good for Maggie, so she can tell who's talking. Any other, any questions or comments before we vote? Do we have anyone signed up to speak under the consent agenda? No, okay. And we do not, we're not doing a roll call vote, which we haven't been doing, well, we have because we've had remote attendance, but. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right, moving on to the public hearings agenda. First, under item A, I need a motion to continue item A to September 13th. Do I have a motion?
So, move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Hearing, here, public hearing, item B is a public hearing to consider the conditional zoning of 31243130 Sweeten Creek Road from RM16 residential multifamily high-density district to residential expansion district slash conditional zone. And Will Palmquist, where's Will? Is Will rushing? They're rolling in. Will, you're up, you are up for a public hearing, item B. It's a dramatic entrance.
Good evening, members of council, I'm Will Palmquist with Planning and Urban Design. I'll be presenting on this conditional zoning for a project titled Fair Haven Summit Apartments. As you can see here, the existing zoning is RM16, and due to the size of the project, they are proposing to rezone the property to residential expansion conditional zone. As shown on this aerial imagery, you can see the project site off of Sweeten Creek Road, which is two parcels, currently mostly vegetated in trees, located between two existing apartment complexes and across from some commercial uses. The future land use, as prescribed in the city's comprehensive plan, is residential neighborhood, and no change in that designation would be required for this rezoning. And then the overall site plan of the project, this project is in a steep slope area due to the elevation of the property. The project is proposed to be clustered in the front half of the site, leaving the rear of the property undisturbed with just some surface, mulch-surface walking trails. And another view of the site plan, which basically consists of three new, mostly four-story multifamily buildings and a clubhouse. All 77 units are proposed to be affordable, new driveway access off of Sweeten Creek Road in the southern part of the site, parking spaces, sidewalks six feet wide along Sweeten Creek and six feet internal to the projects. Their landscaping, open space, and tree canopy preservation requirements are proposed to be met. And just want to include a grading plan, just to show that there is a lot of grading going on on the site, including retaining walls and some taller foundation walls due to the topography of the site. And then just some building elevations, you can see the buildings are a combination three to four stories based on the slope, this one's two to four, and then this one's three to four, so they're kind of angling those buildings into the slope of the site and clubhouse. Staff finds that the project is consistent with the future land use map of residential neighborhood by providing residential uses and a diversity in housing type. The project also supports a number of goals in the comprehensive plan, including greater densities overall, increase in the supply of affordable housing, and utilizing creative design solutions to minimize the impact to the natural environment, such as natural open space and steep topography. Project goes reviewed and approved with conditions at the Technical Review Committee and also the Planning and Zoning Commission back on June 1st. A few comments that were, are conditions that were added to the approval, including some relating to the steep slope area to address any potential hang-ups with some of those specific requirements. As mentioned earlier, all 77 units will be designated affordable for a minimum of 30 years. You can see the different breakdown of the units by percent AMI, and also noting that all units will accept HECA Housing Choice vouchers as well. And then there are a number of technical modifications that the project is requesting, first of which is that the project is proposing six-foot-wide sidewalks instead of the required 10-foot-wide. There are no bike lanes proposed into the development. The landscape buffer on the north side of the site is proposed to be reduced slightly due to the project allowing a driveway access to an existing single-family house there. They're also above the maximum density of units per acre in steep slope areas, so overall, they're proposing 77 units, and on the site, total 73 are allowed by right. The proposed project is also taller than what's allowed in steep slope areas by one story on the downhill and uphill side, and also about 10 feet overall. Staff does concur with the Planning and Zoning Commission, it recommends approval of the proposed conditional zoning. And that concludes my presentation. If I have to answer any questions, and the applicant is also here tonight, I believe, as well.
Any questions? Okay, we do have some people signed up to speak, but we don't have any questions, so we'll go right to that.
Opening the public comment.
Yeah, so we have, I have four people signed up to speak under this item, so during public comment, you'll have three minutes to speak, and, oh, we're back to our lights. Do the lights work? Okay. So, just watch the lights, just like traffic lights, green means go, and whatever the middle color is, kind of an orange, means you're almost done, and red means stop. So, again, you'll have three minutes, and I'm just going to go in order of the folks who signed up to speak under this item. The first is Linda Cozart.
Hello, I live in the Kensington Place Apartment Complex, which is right next door to this one. I read about this complex a while back. My first thought was of the traffic, but I know we need more housing, and I know we need more affordable housing, and it was talked about how they were going to put their buildings up front and leave the back, you know, undeveloped, so it sounded like everybody was trying to do everything right. I didn't stay on top of it, I thought everything was under control, until I got an email last night, and so I, I'm not going to try to address the heights because I really didn't have time to do any research in between. I don't know why they would waive the heights requirement, I think that should apply to everybody, but I do want to talk about the buffer zone between the two complexes, as my understanding is going to be 20 feet, and that they are going to take all the existing trees out and then replant something, hopefully not those pear trees. And I would, I, to ask that people attempt to make it as natural as possible, and to leave as many of the trees that are already there, and natural plantings, so that some of the wildlife, some of the birds and other animals that live there would have a place to live and some food available. I know that there was in the budget for the tree expert, I don't know if we've actually howled run yet, and perhaps that person could come in and work with the people to try to figure out how to make that 20 feet the most possible. I live, don't live at that end of the complex, so I won't be as affected by many, but I know I so enjoy in the morning hearing the birds singing, you know, calling to each other, and I just wish, you know, that they wouldn't disrupt the people who are already there any more than necessary, and I think the new people would enjoy it, too, and I just, again, would like to leave as natural as possible, and I think personally, whenever we have any kind of new development, now that we do have a tree expert, that they might come in and help people figure out what could be saved, and I know we can't, that Asheville has to, you know, is going to change, we can't keep it the way it is, but I don't think we have to destroy everything, and that we can save what we can. So, I would like for you to rethink the buffer zone and make it natural. Thank you.
And you can go ahead and sit down. I was just going to say to the staffer, the applicant, as you hear the concerns or comments, maybe they can be addressed at the end. So, that one, what I heard was the height variance and the makeup of the buffer, whether all the natural vegetation will be removed and replaced. The next person signed up to speak is Sean Brady.
That's actually the developer.
Oh, okay, no, you can, if, yeah.
You don't have to have a public comment.
Okay, and then Marty, we're calling you Marty K., because I can't read your last name.
I'm representing the applicant.
Okay, also, okay, all right. Bethany?
Liken.
Like, is it Liken?
Loken.
Yes, that's a H.
Hello.
I'm the manager at Kensington Place Apartments. I've also been a resident there for four years, so I feel like I'm representing Kensington and my family when I'm speaking on it. So, I have a few concerns and notes to go back to. My biggest concern is the steep slope ordinance, I would like for that to remain in place. You know, so many people value Asheville and the beautiful mountains, and we would not like to have concrete jungles right beside our homes, so if the steep slope ordinance could be honored, that would be wonderful, and not expanded beyond that, that would be great. Also, major concerns with traffic as well, too. I know the 600-unit proposal is in place across from Carolina Day School, and that will be getting leased and being developed and everything, so I have major concerns about traffic on Sweeten Creek without seeing any advancements with the expansion project. I don't know where that is, or where it's going, or whatnot, but just Kensington Place alone, we've lost our entrance sign twice in the past year due to traffic and accidents, and if you were able to look at the planner's map, I actually, the building that it runs up against to on the line, I actually lived in that building for almost four years, and I have concerns about the residents in those buildings because that building is already so loud with traffic, and I can only imagine with 72 more units being developed, at least 72 more cars coming in, how much... at least 72 more cars coming in, how much louder it is going to be for those residents. And I'm sure your inboxes are going to get flooded because I've had a lot of residents tag me as they've sent emails to you guys. So I just ask that you have open minds when you read their concerns. They're very sweet residents, and a lot of them have lived there for 10 to 20 years and just want to make sure that their home is preserved. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have anyone else signed up to speak under this item, but, okay. So we, what we heard was the height, the buffer, and the steep slope. And I don't know if you want to try to address some of the...
And perhaps the Sweeten Creek expansion, if you know anything about it.
Oh, well, we, we know that that's not being funded, but yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'd be glad to speak about some of those. As kind of the comments came in today, we were able to take a look at some of the issues in a little more detail. Let's leave this one up for now. So as mentioned, the road widening projects. I did speak to Ken Putnam about, and he was able to get some information about that, which on these dates are, can be subject to change. But currently, the NC DOT is going to be looking for bids to expand Mills Gap Road, so the road that runs east-west, north of the site in October 2024. And then Sweeten Creek Road would be October 2027, and that would obviously be a multi-year process. So that's kind of where we're at with that. I know other projects in the area, such as the Hawthorne at Mills Gap.
Hold on, just, that's the current, that's the current STIP. There is currently, is currently a plan to take Sweeten Creek off, to, to reprioritize it sometime. So that date is the current STIP that's in place. But in fact, that STIP is not funded. So, and the current proposal is that Sweeten Creek would not be on the plan to widen. The Mills, the Mills Gap intersection, yes. But widening Sweeten Creek is being proposed to not be funded currently.
And we're talking about the state. This is the State Department of Transportation, and STIP stands for...
State, State Transportation Improvement Plan, Program.
Program, thanks, Ken.
But, I mean, you know, basically, DOT doesn't have the money to fund all the projects that are currently in that, in that program and is, is going to be looking for public comment around it. But right now, their proposal would take it off the list to be programmed.
While we're discussing the STIP, I think it would be a benefit to the public to know that in advance of this public comment period that's upcoming around the STIP, that this is a great opportunity for us to reprioritize our funding for our roads because we have a choice to make on whether or not we continue to do highway expansion or invest in the core infrastructure of the city and the county and the region of the NPO.
So the, and there was a proposal before the legislature this year to change the funding formula to try to provide more funding because the gas tax is what supports transportation funding right now, and it is decreasing in the revenue it produces. Thank you for standing there while we talked about the transportation issues, but a lot of people are concerned about Sweeten Creek, and so are we. But that's the current situation.
Yeah, I would just add, you know, some projects, the recently completed Hawthorne project made some intersection improvements to Mills Gap Road and some timing improvements, turn lanes and that sort of thing. I know traffic's still an issue in the area overall. Also add, I know the buffering and landscaping came up and that, and the height, and I think those are kind of related due to the proximity to the building, to the existing apartments, specifically this building, which is three to four stories. The three-story side on the uphill side would be the one facing the existing apartment to the south, so it'll be the shorter of the two sides facing it. As mentioned, the 20-foot-wide Type A landscape buffer is required. And the projects, basically, the project impacts stops about, about here, about halfway down the length of the site. And everything in here, including along the property line, is going to be undisturbed. So that remaining buffer on the eastern side of the site will remain just as it is today.
So be, so what, one of the comments we heard was that the buffer would be, the current vegetation would be removed entirely and replaced. Are you saying that is the case or is not the case?
It is on the, it is remaining on the eastern part of the, of the property. I believe they can get credit for the existing trees and vegetation already there. They might have to plant some, some shrubs to be fully compliant with what's required. But there's no proposal to remove trees or regrade or anything on the eastern half of the site, including, including along here.
But lower down?
Yeah, lower down on the western side will be all, will be cleared. The Type A buffer is, is based on every 100 feet. There's about 500 feet or so, or 600 feet. So if you do the math, and this is off the top of my, somewhat off the top of my head, basically along this section, there would be 24 evergreen trees required, 18 large deciduous trees, 18 small deciduous trees, 60 large shrubs, and 60 small shrubs. So that would kind of, the length of that buffer dictates the per 100 linear feet of plantings required. So just more information on that. We also looked at some building heights nearby. Most of the buildings are two to three to two and a half stories tall as far as the larger apartment complexes in the area. This, this project is three to four stories overall. I think the overall heights, the roofs are not as peaked. Overall, roof structures are a little bit smaller, so they're not, the stories are higher, but the overall height might be somewhat comparable to what's found in the area.
And for the steep slope ordinance?
Yeah, the steep slopes have lower height allowances overall than the Residential Expansion District or other similar zoning districts. So they allow two to three stories, so two stories on the uphill side and three stories on the downhill side, whereas this project proposes three, mostly three to four. So they're one story above that existing allowance. And this came up during the planning and zoning meeting that due to how the height is measured in steep slope areas, we realized the project is actually over that by about maybe five or, five to eight feet, depending on how, what side of the building you measure it from. So it's typically 40 feet from the ground floor elevation to the midpoint of the peaked roof area. And they're, they're around 45 feet to 48 feet is what they're proposing. So they're at five to eight feet over what's allowed by right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
In the absence of a community benefits table for conditional zoning, I'm restating my question. Was there any conversation about solar or renewable energy for this development?
No, that did not come up.
I'll share a little bit, too, that, so this is a hundred... No, not a question for Will, sorry. Thank you, Will. Just some comments because, you know, we, affordable housing and stable housing has become our, one of our key priorities for the upcoming year. And this is a 100% affordable housing project, and we can't always pull these off. So I just wanted to share some of what made this possible. So this received a North Carolina Housing and Finance Agency Tax Award in 2021, a 9% tax credit award, which is rare and hard to achieve.
It wasn't a 9%.
Yes, it was 9%. And then also the Home Consortium, which is a regional four-county partnership that receives some federal funds and then distributes them to these types of projects, also met and allocated some funding. And then Buncombe County has also allocated some funding. And that's kind of, I'm saying this to share the lift that it takes to get a 100% affordable project off the ground. And it makes some of these things, like five-foot higher peaks, seem okay. And then lastly, to Councilor Roni's point, you know, the only reason that we're actually having this discussion is because it's over 50 units. So we have a rule that if you surpass 50 units, you're required to come to council for express permission. And that may be something we want to revisit. Perhaps 100% affordable housing project that goes through all the plan review and design review and checks all the boxes doesn't need additional timing and challenges. That's all.
Todd, we're looking at you about that, okay.
It's your, your work plan.
Thank you.
Okay. Your work plan. Are there any other questions, comments? Is anyone, the developers here, in case anyone has any questions with them? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm happy to make a motion. Let's see. Oh, thank you. I move to approve the conditional zoning request for the property located at 3... I'm sorry, does it matter?
Well, they won't be able to hear you on the thousands of people watching on TV.
It's 100% affordable, big crowd. Okay, motion to approve the conditional zoning request for the property located at 3124 and 3130 Sweeten Creek Road from residential multifamily high-density district RM16 to residential expansion conditional zone, and find that the request is reasonable and the public interest, is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and meets the development needs of the community, and that the request, one, prioritizes greater densities of development overall; two, increases the supply of affordable housing in proximity to transit, schools, and parks; and, three, utilizes creative design solutions which minimize impacts to the natural environment, such as natural open space and steep topography.
So I'll second. Thanks.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Public hearing item C is a public hearing to consider permanently closing a right-of-way east of Wilmington Road and south of 907 Old Fairview Road. And Ken Putnam is here to present that item.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Ken Putnam. I'm the Transportation Department Director. And tonight, after we were able to do this, we're talking about a public hearing for a right-of-way closure. And I want to go ahead and get to the picture so it'll make it a little bit more sense. But Betty Cosart, who I believe is here, if there's any questions for her later on, she's a property owner, she's petitioned for this closure. She lives at 907 Old Fairview Road, which is this property right here. And she wants to close the unopened right-of-way that runs her, along her, the south part of her property so that she can then enable her neighbor to subdivide her lot, and then she would get that entire property right here that you see right here. And the length of this closure is about 128 feet, and the width is 12 feet. And then here is just a picture of standing on the property that she would receive, looking back towards the house, towards the west. So let me just back up here. So that picture's taken right about here, looking in this direction. The Technical Review Committee reviewed this request on April 18th, and their recommendation was to approve the closure. The Multimodal Transportation Committee reviewed this request on April 27th, and their recommendation was to approve the closure. There are no utility conflicts nor transportation, nor transportation connectivity opportunities are associated with this unopened right-of-way. So our staff recommends that you approve the permanent closure, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ken. No questions?
I'm just curious if it was explained why they wanted. Is it to do additional housing or building? Do we have any idea? Doesn't...
I don't know the answer to that. That would be my guess.
Safer would be excited if that was the idea.
Just wondering. How's it?
We do not have anyone signed up to speak on this item, so I will open the public hearing and close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move to adopt a resolution to permanently close an unopened right-of-way east of Wilmington Road and south of 907 Old Fairview Road. I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. And our last public hearing item is a public hearing to solicit comments for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Program Funds Annual Action Plan for fiscal year 2022-2023. Jonathan Jones is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to give you an update on our community development plan for our annual action plan that we submit to HUD each year. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development provides the city with grant funds to support affordable housing, public services, economic development, and community improvements. And so each year, the federal government requires that the city put together an action plan describing how we intend to spend those funds with the help of the Housing and Community Development Committee and the Asheville Area Home Consortium. Community partners submit funding recommendations to city staff, and we go through those and provide funding suggestions to the committees for your consideration. The action plan has been posted to the city's website describing how these funds will be used. And both the HCD Committee and the Affordable Housing Advisor, I mean, the, I'm sorry, the Asheville Area Home Consortium has provided recommendations on, on those funds. So this year, CDBG, the CDBG allocation awarded to the city was just over $1 million, with an additional $300,000 or so from prior-year resources that have been recommended for 12 programs that apply to the city. The home program this year is expected to receive 1.4 million in new funding as well as another $300,000 in previous year funding that we are going to be able to roll forward into this year's plan. So that said, we've got 12 projects that we've got for your consideration for CDBG funding and five projects for home funding. Glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, this item, we do not have anyone signed up to speak under this item, so if there aren't any other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion, and there's a prepared, prepared motion.
I'm happy to. I'll move to adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of the city's fiscal year 2022-23 annual action plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, along with the annual action plan amendments for years 2016, 2017, and 2019, 2020, and 2020, 21, and 21, 22. That include prior resources to be rolled forward into the 2022-2023 CDBG and home projects, and authorizing the city manager to sign all necessary documents to this effect.
Second.
Did you get that, Ms. Shanika, Vice Mayor? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. That concludes our public hearings agenda. We're now going to move on to the fiscal year 2022-2023 annual operating budget. And before I hand it over to the city manager, I would just add that we did the public comment on the budget at our last meeting, so we don't take public comment at this meeting. And we'll have a brief presentation, but I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and City Council members, staff, and the Asheville community. We're at a pivotal point in the budget process, which is, I, we, hope, the adoption of the City of Asheville's operating and capital budget for the next fiscal year, which begins on July 1, 2022, and runs through June 30 of 2023. We don't have a formal presentation prepared for tonight's action on the budget since we have been meeting with you and the community since February, and those meetings were once or twice a month to discuss the budget. As I stated on May 24th, when the manager's budget was first presented, this proposed budget is a balanced and fiscally responsible spending plan for this community. We hope the adjustments we presented at the June 14th meeting, though, to the proposed budget we presented on May 24th are consistent with and support both the council and community priorities. To close, Mayor and council, I want to again thank you for your time, your energy, your passion, your endurance, your guidance and advocacy in helping staff develop this proposed budget. I need to also again acknowledge and thank the village of City of Asheville employees that were involved in developing this budget, but especially staff in our finance department, which include Finance Director Tony McDowell and staff in the Budget Division, including Taylor Floyd, Heather Carey, and Abigail Rowley. Before I turn it over to you, Mayor, I would like for Tony McDowell to provide some additional information about the process needed to vote on this proposed budget, which is a little different than we've done in the past. Tony?
Thank you, Ms. Campbell, and good evening, Mayor and council. It feels kind of weird. We're much closer than we've been the last few months.
It's on, isn't it?
And that law, the North Carolina Session Law 2021-191, prohibits council members from participating in making or administering a contract, including the awarding of money with any nonprofit with which a public official is associated. And that was effective January 1, 2022. So what that means for the budget vote tonight is you all are going to be taking some separate votes. You'll vote once on the budget ordinance, and then you'll vote twice more after that on some nonprofit funding that is included in the budget ordinance that we've separated out, and then you'll do a budget amendment to approve that funding. So that's really the only thing I had to add. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor. Thank you all.
Thank you. And the nonprofit funding is a little bit odd. It's our Economic Development Commission, which exists in most cities and counties and is funded by most cities and counties, but it's technically a nonprofit that we fund, so we're under this new state law. I will have to recuse myself under that vote because I serve on the Economic Development Commission. Al White sides of the county, had to recuse himself for the same reason. And then I think Sage, you've got to recuse yourself because of the Sports Commission vote, which is technically another. So it's a, obviously, well-intended law, but has kind of a funny result when it comes to voting on the annual budget at a city council meeting. So I just wanted to make a couple of comments about this budget. And, you know, first of all, thank the council and the staff and the manager for all the work that's gone under this budget. As we've gone through the years, the budget process has been much more robust in terms of our outreach into the community, the number of meetings that we have regarding the budget, and the pieces. We meet separately on talking about the capital budget and fees and all the different components, and then finally bring it together. So not every local government goes through that multi-step process to get to this point, but we've sort of developed this in the interest of transparency and inclusivity. It is not a perfect process by any means, but it's a lot, it's a lot more accessible, I think, to the community than you'll find in a lot of communities. This budget totals just under $217 million, and it does not call for a change in the property tax rate. The property tax rate will remain at 40.3 cents. It does, I just want to highlight a couple of interesting things in this budget. It does include a $500,000 allocation for reparations to add to the funds that we've already allocated for reparations, and for that amount to recur year after year, there is going to be a discussion about whether or not that should be a percentage of the budget rather than a fixed number. In addition, just so you know, this is an effort around reparations we're doing with the community and with Buncombe County, and Buncombe County has included $2 million in reparations in their budget to help catch up with us, I would offer. So, and I say that positively. We also importantly have an increase for pay for our city employees. We have around 1,200 city employees, and we're bringing their minimum wage as of, by January 1 of this mid-year, we'll have gotten them to a minimum of $17.70 an hour, which is the new living wage amount for Buncombe County. And for all those that were hired before December 31st, they will receive, 2021, they will receive a 5% increase in pay, and those hired after will receive a 2.5% increase in pay. We've also, a very exciting moment, we've also included finally the position of an urban forester in this budget. Yay! And we have some other positions in this budget, a GIS specialist, a houseless strategy project specialist. Those are new positions that we're funding in this budget. We're also doing a lot of important software updates. We have sanitation and waste reduction program funded in this budget, some emergency preparedness planning, and also it is time for us to renew our disparity study so that we can support our minority contracting efforts. That is a requirement to be able to continue that program. We, along the lines of reimagining public safety and continuing that journey, we have consolidated the 911 call center with the city and county, and this is providing us an important foundation so that we can have emergency response that better fits the needs of our community, integrating the county's community paramedic program into the first responder protocol for Asheville. That's very important if we're going to provide emergency services differently than we have before in our community. We've also funded additional training for EMT firefighters to handle opioid overdose calls. Unfortunately, this continues to be a challenge in not just our community, but especially in our community. On the housing front, we already have, you know, we get emails every once in a while, people asking us, what are you doing about affordable housing? And we probably need to be able to develop our answer. We can include in every email response. But we're doing a lot around the issue of affordable housing. But in this budget, to move that forward, we have, we're funding a missing middle housing study so that we can get, we can get some very specific suggestions about ordinance changes. We're going to need to be able to allow for barriers to be reduced, building missing middle housing, which we're talking here about townhomes, infill housing, accessory dwelling units, duplexes, triplexes, that sort of housing. And in addition, this budget includes our continuing participation with Buncombe County for tax relief for income-qualified homeowners who are finding it difficult to meet the burden of paying property taxes. We're also looking forward to this next year determining how to spend the remaining 8.5 million in our Affordable Housing Bond that voters passed in 2016. So we have a lot of really exciting projects in the pipeline that involve city-owned land, and we're looking forward to continuing the work on those projects. This is in addition to the several large projects that the city was able to fund through federal relief funds this last year and really scale up our efforts around housing at all different kinds of levels, including permanent supportive housing and shelter for domestic violence victims, as well as Code Purple, which is, instead of, kind of, this last year, we were looking for funding in the middle of the year, we're funding that from the outset this year. And then just a couple other final things. We are finally funding the relocation of the Parks Maintenance Facility in the East End neighborhood, which is very exciting, and been asked for by the neighborhood for quite some time. And in addition to that, allocating significant funding to the Memorial Stadium redevelopment to include a track. So this will be quite transformational for that area of town. Very exciting. And then finally, just to mention in this budget, I don't know how many people know, but we offer after-school programs and camp programs, and D. Tyrell talked a little bit about some of those opportunities, and we've increased funding for that here. Those are services provided through Parks and Rec and our recreation centers. So just a few things to highlight in this, in this year's budget, and and again, thanks for everyone's hard work and patience and listening to us and changing, changing the budget as we've moved along through this process to get to where we are today. And anybody else? Please, look free.
I do have a couple thoughts, and none of these should be a surprise because I brought them up through the work sessions, but first I wanted to express gratitude for the urban forester position, which I don't think would be in our budget if it hadn't been the Urban Forestry Commission advocating for the past at least four years so steadily. And also thanks to the Reparations Commission for their recommendation for a percentage of our budget, which we're not doing yet, but we have talked about moving that forward. I will not be supporting this budget tonight because I remain committed to affordability, to public safety, and I have concerns about how we're doing the budget. Firstly, we're not doing living wages yet. We're delaying it until January, which means delaying, lagging when we could lead on affordability for our own staff. Living wages will be going up for city staff in January, when the living wage is anticipated to go up as well. We are backing out of our commitment to expand transit funding. We do have to shore up our core service first, but we need to expand, not back out of transit. So transit can't wait. Public safety, we have a lot of work to do around public safety, and I hear a lot of conversations, like we heard in the Public Safety Committee today, about partners who are already doing the work, but they need funding and space. Youth mentorship programming, we heard from my dad, he taught me that this morning. Operation Gateway with Phillip Cooper's program, with diversion and reentry programming, community paramedicine. These aren't conceptual. They're actually happening in our community, and we could make a big difference in addressing public safety in our community if we were to fund and get behind our partners. And then there's the how we do it. For me, using the ARPA funds perpetuates a scarcity narrative, and I really have a deep concern about us backing out of the commitment that we've made to, even though it's only partial, to addressing the need for emergency shelter. But also, how do we get these budget commitments we've made this year and the budget next year when we don't have ARPA funds? Thank you.
Anyone else?
I do just have just something I'm hoping you can chime in on. As I was running to the car on my way here, the mother of, a staff member called me and indicated that there was consternation related to compression. And I said something along the lines of there's going to be a tiered increase in salary. Can you address that specifically so staff will feel more at ease?
Sure. For the first time, we presented recommendations around employee compensation with the intent of addressing compression. Now, every time we increase people's salaries, it creates compression. So it's something that we're chasing every budget cycle, but it is something that we are committed to addressing. So if you've read the budget document or you've seen some of the presentations, we have said 5% increase plus additional funding to address compression. Will we address it completely? Absolutely not. We will not. But what we are going to do is look at the most egregious circumstances, and our management team even discussed this like yesterday, and supervisors on last Thursday. We're going to address it, we hope, in the next month, two months. So we definitely understand that that is an issue, and it'll be a continuing issue, but it is one that we are addressing head-on. And I don't know, Tony, if there's any.
I'll just share a little appreciation. This is only my second time working on a budget like this, and I was amazed at some of the expertise at this dais and the staff with us today, particularly these three women to the left of me, because they have extensive experience and have been here for so many years. And I just wanted to make sure that I expressed my appreciation for y'all and your expertise, and Mayor had to deal with my endless questions for months, and the city manager, of course, who was very helpful in providing all of the information for all of my hundreds of questions. So I just wanted to make sure to thank you all for your ongoing expertise and for lending it to those of us that are new and have so much to learn.
Okay, this is the moment. Drum roll. We need a motion. Well, actually, we need several motions, so let's just hunger down here.
So Brad, should I do this just in the order that it's?
Yeah, we have to go in the order it does, right?
Yes, please do it in the order that you see it. And the first motion is simply on the budget without any conflicts, as the mayor discussed a minute ago, so that will require no recusals. When we get into the second motions, we'll do preliminary motions to recuse one member on each.
So I will make a motion to adopt an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2023 annual budget, and it will be my last, and, oh, please. But it has been, I mean, this is, I mean, just, and I'm going to take a moment. Doing the budget is like the hardest thing and the most important thing that council members do. And this group of women on this council has probably spent more time and more energy and more passion around the budget adoption than I've ever seen. And I do want to thank you. You know, I've seen other council members who, you know, I'm not really sure actually even read it. And that's not evident at all with this council. I mean, you are all passionate. You've all given your all and your thoughts and listening, and I just wanted to express my appreciation for that. So with that, I will make a motion to adopt this fiscal year 2023 budget. Second. Second.
I'll second. If it wasn't clear, I have a second.
We have a.
Mayor, I made a second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. You got that, Megan? Yes. We always like to do that with a flair. It's gotten more flair every year.
Just too boring.
Otherwise, right?
Couldn't go out like that, Gwen.
I know. So I will make a motion to recuse Mayor Manheimer from voting on the attached budget amendment in accordance with North Carolina Session Law 2021-191 SB 473 related to the Economic Development Coalition.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that was the recusal. So now?
Yes on the recusal, sorry.
Yeah, okay, so yes on the recu, so we have a 7-0 vote on the recusal, and then?
And then I'll make a motion to adopt a fiscal year 2023 budget amendment in the amount of $100,000 in the general fund to allocate budget from the city manager's contingency to fund the city's annual contribution to nonprofits with which members of council are associated, which this refers to the Economic Development Coalition.
I'll second.
Okay, excuse me.
With a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
So a motion to, I'll make a motion to recuse Councilwoman Turner from voting on the attached budget amendment in accordance with North Carolina Session Law 2021-191 SB 473 related to the Sports Commission.
Second.
And so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's on the recusal, so now you're recused.
Yeah, so you can't vote now. And then I will make a motion to adopt a fiscal year 2022-23 budget amendment in the amount of $45,000 in the general fund to allocate budget from the city manager's contingency to fund the city's annual contribution to nonprofits with which members of the council are associated, and this refers to the Sports Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, that concludes the budget process for the, for now. And so we don't have, we don't have anything else on our formal agenda. New business and formal discussion and public comment is next and last, and we have several people signed up to speak. So folks, just as a reminder, the light, watch the lights on the lectern. You'll have three minutes to speak, and I will go in order of the folks that signed up, and the first person signed up to speak is Roy Harris.
Good evening, everybody, and good evening, Mayor and council. I think I've been here before. Maybe 30 years ago, I came to speak to city council, and it was at the request of Herb Watts, the late Herb Watts, that invited me to apply for a position on the city council. Number one, thank you for adopting the budget. I know that some of you may have some consternation about some of the items in there. I know that some of you may have some consternation about some of the items in that budget and everything, but keep the fight, keep on fighting. The next thing is that I've been in Asheville now for 39 years. When I came to Asheville, I had a full head of hair. I weighed about 135 pounds. I was single, and I lived in an apartment. Now, 39 years later, I have a house and all of those things. I won't tell the weight and all of that stuff. But thank you, thank you. It's got to be one of the toughest processes, being on the school board, being on other entities, and being on those kinds of things. You realize that this is a process and you have to go through. You don't get all that you want, but you hope that you can go forward. I don't know what I've told you before, but I put on my agenda that my three-year-old granddaughter is to come back here 15 years from now. And as I looked on the dais today, I'm like, oh, so some of those were not even here the day I came to Asheville. I don't know your age and everything, but I can sort of guess it. And so I'm like, maybe they were here, they was in diapers running around and everything when I first started coming to city council. Gwen, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And thank you. As we go forward, oh, by the way, I will pull down the budget tonight, and I will print it off, and then I will start to look for items that are in my community, which is the South Side. I'll try to figure out what money is being spent in my South. One way I did it one time, I says, $217 million divided city up into 10 parcels, I ought to get $21 million. I don't think it works that way, but I'll be looking for things in this budget that will affect me and my community and everything. Good luck as you go forward. Oh, and one last thing. I think the last time I was in this room, I commented on the pictures that were on the wall. They've been changed, and thank you. I feel more representative here now, so thank you.
Thank you.
The next person signed up to speak is Chris Cleary.
I'm Chris Cleary. I've only been in Asheville.
Sorry.
A little rusty. I don't think he heard it. I don't even think he heard it. It was just a beep.
I'm here as a fairly new resident. I've only been here a little, just sort of a year, but it's important to me that actually the folks that were recognized from Parks and Recreation Department is pretty important to me. I fell in love with the game of tennis probably 50-some years ago when I moved to Florida, and I was playing on a couple of public parks where a guy took an interest in me and started showing me what was possible through the game of tennis. And so when I moved here and I was still in love with the game, the Aston Parks closed down for the season, which was news to me, and so I sought out something else to do. And I would see the game of pickleball being played where I was from, and I thought, someday I'll play pickleball, but that's for later. And I had heard a joke that pickleball is where old tennis players go to die. I hope that's not the case, but I'm surprised. I mean, there's a hell of a lot of us here, and I just did want to say a couple of things because once I started playing the game here, which I hadn't really been playing much in October, it was really a wonderful way not only to meet a lot of other people, but to learn a lot about this town in a very fast fashion. And I now know people from all different walks of life, from all different parts of town, who can inform me about their experience here, whether they've been here a little while or a long while. And so it felt kind of important for me to just come out and just kind of express gratitude, I guess, for what's already here in terms of pickleball. But there are a lot of people that are committed to the effort to kind of continue to grow it. And as a tennis player, I recognize that we kind of can exist on the same facilities, but we kind of can't. And the amazing thing for me about pickleball is that I used to play it with the same bunch of guys in the same place, you know, pretty much we'd all just know each other. We didn't learn a lot about much of anything. And then I came here and I can play with people from 20 to 80 years old of all different kinds of capability, and we can get four people together, and we're all different kinds of skills, and next thing you know, we're playing a game. Tennis, it's not that possible. And I definitely recognize the popularity of what's going on with that game, and I think it's, you know, it's going to grow, and it's obviously growing faster than tennis. And I may have to give up tennis, you know, at some point anyway. But I do think that because of the dimensions and everything like that, it's been pretty clear to me as I go to Oakley and Monford and all these other places that we do have limited space, and we're trying our best to get along and cooperate and stuff, but there will come a time, I think, where it would be lovely to have dedicated pickleball courts so that that's the game that can be there, and the tennis folks can enjoy theirs, and we're all happy and we're not fighting over space that's limited. So I recognize everybody's resources are limited, but I'm just glad to be here and glad to say a couple of things, and thanks very much for listening.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is Kat Case.
Good evening. I'm Kat Case. I'm here to speak to you on behalf of dedicated pickleball courts. In fact, I changed my name because of pickleball. Why? Because in Asheville, there are so many pickleball players concentrated in so few places to play, it's common to have multiple Kathy's playing at the same time. We had to get creative, hence why Kat. Fact, pickleball from its inception is a social inclusive sport crossing all barriers because anyone can play it. Race, tribe, age, religion, class, or any other divisive label just doesn't apply nor is it relevant. Pickleball has the ability to unite diverse people and build community. All we need is access. Fact, the current number one ranked 3.5 woman player on APP Tour, national indoor champion and national silver medalist, her club affiliation is Asheville Parks and Recreation. This is not shared to impress, but to establish credibility. Forty-one tournaments in 18 months, 15 states from Oregon to Florida, Michigan to Alabama, I've seen a lot of Parks and Recreation venues and witnessed the pride communities take in their pickleball facilities. The fact that a city of the size of Asheville doesn't have any dedicated pickleball courts is hard to explain to people, given our population and its makeup. Ben, Oregon, which is approximately the same size of Asheville, has two park locations, each with 16 dedicated courts. Ben has over 3,500 paying due members playing in a league. Even the smallest townships have figured it out, build pickleball courts and the money follows. For example, Opelika, Alabama Parks and Recreation spent $700,000 on 12 covered dedicated pickleball courts, and the return on their investment was less than one year. Within two-plus years of opening, they already justified and completed the next 12 covered courts. Impacts to the community, 2.5 annually, that's 2.5 million annually and growing. My personal contribution, three trips, over $1,000 in food and lunch. Now imagine what Asheville pickleball courts could generate. As I can assure you all, there's no comparison between Asheville and Opelika. However, unfortunately, Asheville's lack is now starting to get generation of negative press. In summary, dedicated pickleball courts will not only serve the public good, but can be a significant source of revenue for the community for years to come. Please give Asheville the opportunity to unite over the love of this game. If that's not enough of a justification for the expense, then do it for the money. Please. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Well, we don't get that. Is the next person Michael Lucick? Am I saying that right?
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Michael Lucick. I'm a citizen who works downtown. I represent a landlord who houses quite a few tenants who have businesses in downtown, and more importantly, I'm a father of a young daughter who works in downtown. Luckily, her job requires that after sunset, no associate can leave without a partner so that they're not ever alone because of concern for safety. I want to just take a moment to commend you as a group for your attempts to, for your budget, for the funding of our police force, contrary to what you heard here a moment ago, to the efforts to rebuild and strengthen the police force. I think it's commendable and it's appreciated by both business owners, citizens, and parents. I've had an opportunity in my career to work in literally every major city in North America. I can tell you the people you have on the force, the majority are just outstanding individuals who do a great job. I was out on Friday and watched them at work during the protests. They did a great job making sure the protesters had clear avenues to express themselves safely. At the same time, they positioned themselves to make sure nothing happened, but not to make themselves obvious, to make the protest about them, or to involve themselves in any way in the protest. Just one example of the outstanding work they do, and we have a necessity of calling them almost daily, and they do their best to respond as quickly, but they're always professional when they deal with some of the challenging residents in the city. They've always been professional, polite, and done their best to allow them to maintain their dignity and be respectful. So again, thank you for what you're doing, thank you for the efforts. And I just wanted to endorse our police force. I think they do an outstanding job, and we're very appreciative, as against citizens and parents. Thank you.
Thank you. I just, I forgot to mention earlier, and if you'll just indulge me for a second, I forgot to say, and since pickleball folks are still here, so if you may or may not know, in the city of Asheville and Buncombe County, the room tax, which is paid by visitors for Airbnb and hotel rooms, all goes to the Tourism Development Authority, which is a separate entity from the city. It does not come directly to the city. And it is just a moment of irony for our, ongoing moments of irony for our community. But the, and the tax is looking like it's going to bring in about $40 million this year. And today, just while we were here, the, a bill to revise the allocation of that tax passed the Senate, finally. I've been getting updates all day, and I'm actually, after this meeting, headed down to Raleigh, and will be there tomorrow. Hopefully, it will make it through. They're also, they also just released the budget where we're supposed to at 5:00, so that means things are going to move quickly. I say all that to say that one of the things that we can do as a city is apply for funding for projects that are considered, they have to be tourist-related. In other words, tourists have to be able to use them, but locals can also use them. So for, a good example would be a Greenway project. But, you know, since we've been having this pickleball party, I've been trying to look at how other cities have funded it, and an obvious synergy for us would be to try to figure out a way to harness the room tax for something like that. So I know some of you have been meeting with Parks and Rec staff to learn about that and how to form a nonprofit and be in, you could be your own applicant even, because nonprofits can apply for these funds in addition to the city and the county and the university. But I just wanted to say that it is not a perfect change. This will only allow up to a third of that gazillion-dollar bucket, well, $40 million bucket, to be accessible to nonprofits and government entities for capital-related tourism and local expenditures. And it should be much more, especially given how incredibly large the amount of money is now. But anyway, that, so everyone, run home and write to your favorite House member in the North Carolina House and encourage them to take up the bill and pass it before they close the session shortly, so we at least have that additional resource to look at.
Even if they're not your favorite.
Even if, pretty much if they're not your favorite, it's probably someone you should be emailing.
If we might provide a moment of clarity, that we did with our legislative agenda ask for 50% officially because that represents a better and more appropriate split.
And, well, yes, and one funny thing I learned is that apparently the Senate rules are flipped from the House rules, and they actually call for 6633 in the direction we would like to see it. Little known, apparently, they went and dug those out of the closet, but we didn't get that mix. We got the other. But anyway, I just wanted to add that before you all leave, because sometimes you leave before the very end, but just so you know.
I would like pickleballers to reach out to me and teach me to play.
Well, they sent us a sign up to sign up to play.
And I get emails all the time about the schedule, but...
I'm a little scared because someone mentioned to me they had lessons, which sounded complicated. All right. Okay, so continuing with our public comment, the next person signed up to speak is Jay
Council members, mayor, citizens of Asheville, I just found something out recently that really disturbed me in the water department. Kind of an open question, both for the city manager, ma'am, and for anyone in the council. Does anyone know how long it will take to get a water tap put into your house if you pay for that?
Not fast enough.
New construction?
Any type of construction, both affordable, anything that you want for development in Asheville. When I paid, about two weeks ago, I was given a response of 90 to 120 days. That's for taps and meters. I started calling all the plumbers and builders. I'm in real estate, and I actually will have to sell real estate if I can't get water taps in because the revised number that we heard today was 24 weeks, six months. That means all development affordable, you name it, will cease. We will not be able to put water to houses. It amazed me when I started calling around and asking if anyone was aware of this. It sounds like no one is, which means it seems the water department's working in a bubble and doesn't comprehend that if we don't have water, we don't have growth or development. We got a problem. We need to immediately find alternatives to sources of water taps and meters. Like now, let's put people on a plan, let's put a solution so that we get taps in 60 days. If we shut down and we can't develop all your affordable housing dreams, they're going to go down the toilet. So I was deeply concerned. I've not been to a meeting before. I felt like y'all needed to know this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. I'm assuming you're taking notes. Someone's going to look at this.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Manheimer. I'd like to just start this evening by congratulating you on passing the budget in a timely fashion. I know that the budget is a huge challenge, extremely complex and contentious, but it is essential to the functioning of our city, and it gives us a baseline to anticipate how things will go for the coming fiscal year, and it's something we can benchmark against as we go and for the future. So thank you for accomplishing that critical task. I'd also like to thank you for two things this evening. One is for updating this council chamber. I feel it represents the spirit of our city and our location so much better than what we had before, and I think it provides a calm, serene, elegant environment in which to do the people's business. So thank you for that. It's a major improvement. And the second thing, I'd like to thank you for the proclamation on reproductive rights as well. This is a topic that's on a lot of people's minds right now. I know that as a municipality, there are limited things that we can do as a matter of policy or law, but I think something like the proclamation makes it clear what we wish would happen and how we wish people would be able to live their lives with bodily autonomy. So I appreciate both of those things very much. The purpose for me speaking with you this evening is to note that although we now have a budget, budgets are always subject to amendment. And I am sure that the prospect of amending the budget will come up during the course of this coming fiscal year. And I would like... And I would like very much to ask you to bear in mind that there was a commitment made to the transport-- to expansion of transportation, public transportation in the city, which was promised but not delivered. If you have the opportunity to make amendments, if additional sources of income become available because there's fungible money that's being brought in from the TDA that's more than originally anticipated, that may be able to cover some expenses, which the funds could then be moved and put into service of transportation. I hope that if budget amendments come up, you will put public transit at the top of the queue for broader funding and better support. Thank you for your attention this evening.
Thank you. Alan Eskavitz is the next person signed up to speak.
Good evening, everybody. Mayor Manheimer, members of city council, and city manager Deborah Campbell. My name is Alan Eskavitz. I served as the first vice chair of the Neighborhood Advisory Committee when it was first created in 2012. I serve as a board member of the Coalition of Asheville Neighborhoods and a board member of the Grove Park Sunset Mountain Neighborhood Association. My comments will be brief. I want to thank you all for the funding of the urban forester position for FY 2022-23. The city has seen a steady decline in tree canopy over the past decade. Tree loss has impacted negatively, climate change contributed to higher temperatures, and during the summer in our community has contributed to reduction of stormwater absorption. For these reasons, I appreciate the city taking the step and having the precedence to allocate the funds for the city manager-- I'm sorry, for the urban forester position. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The last person signed up to speak is Jonathan Wayne Scott.
Hey, I'm Jonathan Wayne Scott, and I couldn't resist coming to the first, you know, meeting here in these rooms, greet some of you who haven't been here yet. Congratulations, Ms. Mosley, on the memorial track, you know, that was really her lift, and thank you all for following her leadership and bringing that, it was quite an accomplishment. I also find the artwork to be stunning, actually, not just that the old stuff is gone, but this is really beautiful, I love the colors. Got to do something about those curtains, though, because there's too many reds, burgundy in our flag over there, our red flag and the curtains, it's just too much over there. But anyway, congratulations on the, you know, getting to the budget and whatnot. I know that, you know, looking at next year, we were talking about maybe some possible developments in the South Side, I might-- guess that might include the upgrade to McCormick Field, that I know that the Asheville tourists are demanding a $30 million upgrade to bring it up to minor league baseball standards here in town, and of course, that baseball team is partly owned by the governor of Ohio, Governor Mike DeWine, and I've heard quite a lot about, you know, who we do business with and our budget reflecting our values and whatnot, and here I am before a historic all-female council, which will likely be the same, you know, at least all-female, and you're going to have to deal with this issue, you know, and so here we have Governor Mike DeWine, who is, you know, was outlawing abortions before Roe was turned over, Ohio is one of the states that have done away with abortions already, and so, you know, I think that this might be something to consider who we're doing business with and whether they reflect the values of this community. I mean, not to spoil your success on the budget that's only been passed for about ten minutes now, but that'll be coming up. And thanks for all that you're doing, thanks for engaging in my quaint endeavor in democracy, mayor. I think that elections don't necessarily bring out the best in everybody, and I can say that about myself in this perhaps, and-- but it does show who we all are, and it's just important for that process to take place. And I'll also chime in on the change, the big change to our Tourism Development Authority money, it's not a change at all, and not a change at all. And basically, what you said tonight is if we-- tourists come first. The improvements that you want to see have to be, you know, targeted to tourism, and it can apply to locals, and that's a huge problem, and it's not-- nothing's changing for the better in this. I am glad that they'll be changing the number to 66.6%. I think it's kind of an auspicious and appropriate number for the Tourism Development Authority, but we need a better conversation around this money, and it's good to see everybody and have a great night.
Thank you. That was the last person signed up to speak under public comment. We do have a closed session, and we have a closed session motion.
I move that the Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reasons. One, to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina, or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the general statutes. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1. The laws that make the information privileged and confidential are North Carolina General Statute 143-31810E and two, to consult with an attorney employed by the city about matters with respect to which the attorney-client privilege between the city and its attorney must be preserved, including but not limited to the handling of the following matters: City of Brevard versus HCA Healthcare, Inc. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3.
Second. Great, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and we will adjourn from the closed session.